If you'd be kind enough to start us off with a prayer and pledge.
Good morning. Rest in peace, my friend. I'm thankful that each city council member, every mayor, and all the leaders of this city. I feel that we owe you this attention, my son. We just want to say, actually, father, that you must determine about each and every item on this campus, father, if you would best consider my name. We thank you for that, and we pray for your safety.
All right, thank you, Councilman London, I appreciate that. We're officially called to order in regards to a roll call. Councilman London?
Present.
Councilman Wilson?
Present.
Councilman Box?
Present.
Councilman Cuellar?
Here.
And myself, present. Now we find ourselves at our place for the approval of minutes. We have two sets of minutes to approve, so if we could go ahead and take those as separate motions. Do we have a motion for the approval of the March eighteenth minutes?
I make a motion that the minutes on March eighteenth, 2021, be approved.
Second. We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next, we have a motion for the approval of the minutes from the April first special council meeting.
I make a motion that the minutes for the special council meeting on April first, 2021, be approved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much. We find ourselves at the moment of the agenda to approve the bills. Now I would accept a motion for the payment of current bills.
Council President Spotty, I had a few questions on some of the expenditures, and I'm wondering if we can have those answered. One of them had to do with IPML for occupational license fees, an amount of thirteen thousand six hundred and ninety-four dollars and six cents. What is that for?
That is where the employees that were working from home filed for refund on their occupational license fee.
Is that the same thing with Insperity PEO Services L.P.? That amount was one thousand sixty-seven thirty-one.
Uh, yes.
All right, and then the last question on the expenditures has to do with vendor Jefferson County EMA, civil defense, and the amount of sixteen thousand four hundred and twenty-four dollars. Can you explain what that is for, sir?
That is the annual fee that we pay in the EMA each year.
Thank you.
Any other questions on expenses before we move to approve? Perfect. All right, I'll accept a motion for the approval of payment on current bills.
I make a motion to be approved. Let's pay the current bills in an amount of two hundred and seventy-five thousand one hundred and sixty-nine dollars and twelve cents.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All in motion? Thank you. All right, now we find ourselves looking for any professional or consultant reports tonight. Okay. Now, Mayor, if you would, I know you have some announcements and special guests, and ultimately your report. Who is here, sir?
Well, I'd like to say good evening to everyone. We are delighted to have you here in the room tonight. We're going to reward some great warriors that played a significant role in the politics and the landscape of the city of Irondale, and we do not want them to be forgotten. I had an opportunity to serve with all three, and they were all three great men. So tonight, we're going to have a proclamation for human trafficking, and then we're going to proceed with our proclamations for Mike Coppidge, Alan Ramsey, and Ron Bagwell. Now I'll start off first with our word proclamation that we have for human trafficking. Trudy, are you coming up here on the stage for it? I thought that's why you moved down, because you wanted to be able to receive the proclamation. So I won't read everything of the proclamation, but a couple of months ago, we had an opportunity at the Mayor's Association to hear a presentation pertaining to human trafficking. And I would say that human trafficking is close to my heart, because I have a daughter that's twenty-seven years old, and the worst thing that I could ever think of, that somebody was to throw her into a van to be able to sell her into slavery, and that we would never see her again. Highway twenty happens to be one of the hottest highways in the country when it's pertaining to human trafficking. So the city of Irondale has made a commitment that we're going to become a human trafficking free zone, and that we're going to do everything within our powers to make sure that we can combat human trafficking. Our whole staff and every employee will be going through some form of training to be able to deal with human trafficking. The police department and the fire department, they have a different training, because they actually get the opportunity to be able to deal with it in real time. But we want to let everybody know that the city of Irondale is very, going to be very strong against this, and we're going to take a stand, and that's what this proclamation is for tonight, to let everyone know that you're not going to be able to do human trafficking in the city of Irondale, and think that no one is actually paying attention to what you're doing. Also, Ms. Trudy Roland, she was also responsible for this. I remember when I was on the campaign trail, and it's very dear to her heart, and I told her that if I was elected and had the opportunity to be able to serve the wonderful city of Irondale, we would make sure that we make this a priority, and that we try to do our part to make a difference in this county. So, Trudy, do you want to? You don't have to say anything, you just come up and hold it.
Yes, ma'am.
So Barbara is.
Okay.
Because Barbara couldn't be here.
According to Trudy. This is the...
Alabama Task Force.
Alabama Task Force.
Barbara Fowler.
With Miss Barbara Fowler.
And she couldn't be here tonight, she's watching through Zoom, so Barbara, I'll fill in for you. But yeah, it's through Alabama Task Force, they all get all of the police officers, fire departments, all their authorities trained, and then we're hoping to take it into the community. So eventually, we're hoping that all of you, if you're interested in being trained on awareness of human trafficking in our community, what you can do to help combat it right here on I-20. There'll be a lot of different meetings and a lot of great things that can take place in the city of Irondale. We've been trying to do this for five years now, so I really do thank Mayor Stewart for his first, keep it as work, and helping us start fight. I have been working in human trafficking now about three years. I actually worked with the survivors, we've actually done three rescues in our city, so it is in our city, so now I'm very proud that we can come together and combat it.
She actually said a lot, and I didn't want to say.
It's there in my heart.
I'm going to ask Alan Ramsey's family to come to the stage. We wanted to present this proclamation to the Ramsey family. When I first got involved in politics, Alan was the first individual to write a check to be able to support our campaign. And he was such a nice individual, he basically kind of took me up on his wings, he was serving at the mayor at that time, and I always called him mayor. I never called him anything else, I just remembered him as being the mayor, but he was a wonderful guy, he really loved the city of Irondale, he served on the council as well as he was the mayor of this fantastic city, and I just wanted to be able to let Trina know how much we love Buddy, because that's what she calls it. So I'm going to go ahead and read this proclamation, and let you all know how fantastic Mr. Alan Buddy Ramsey, or I used to call him Mayor Ramsey, was really a fantastic guy. And it says, "Whereas Alan Buddy Ramsey lived a life of great service to his community, city, state, and nation. Whereas Alan Ramsey graduated from Enslie High School and Birmingham Southern College, where he was a member of CAFSA, AFSA, or fraternity, and the Birmingham School of Law, where he earned his Juris Doctorate Degree of Law. Whereas Alan Ramsey served in the Alabama Air National Guard during the Berlin Crisis. Whereas Alan Ramsey worked at Alabama Power and Southern Company Services while putting himself through law school. Whereas Alan Ramsey successfully practiced law from nineteen seventy-one to twenty eighteen. Whereas Alan Ramsey served on the Irondale City Council for one term. Whereas Alan Ramsey was elected to serve as the mayor of Irondale for eight years. Whereas Alan Ramsey was a devoted and loving husband, father, friend, and church member. Now therefore, be hereby resolved that I, James D. Stewart Jr., mayor of the city of Irondale, honor Alan Buddy Ramsey and his family with this proclamation. In witness whereof, I sign and seal on the seventh day of April, 2021." Okay.
Thank you so much.
Ms. Ramsey? Ms. Trina? I would be remiss if I didn't say anything about what Mayor Stewart called Mayor Ramsey, and I'll make it quick. When I first was appointed to the city council in 2003, Mayor Ramsey, he was the mayor at that time, and I was like a deer in headlights, didn't know anything that was going on, but as I can remember, Mayor Ramsey, he just sat me down and said, "Hey, man," he said, "you know, everything is not going to come easy right now, but if you just hang in there, there are going to be some tough times, but if you just hang in there and move forward, just be positive, you'll make it." And I've always remembered those words, as far as what Mayor Ramsey said to me when I came on board in 2003, but like I said, he was a great man, and I truly miss him, I do. In my last presentation, before I turn it over to Councilwoman Protim Wilson to be able to do a proclamation for Ron Bagwell, I also served with Ron as well, very low-key, very mild-mannered, did not say a whole lot, but when he did speak up at a council meeting, you knew that he really meant what he was saying. He wasn't a large man, but when he spoke, his words were very large. I only had maybe eighteen months to be able to serve with him, because I came on the council in 2007 and finished up the term in 2008, but even when he would come by City Hall, he was just such a nice individual, and I'm glad that I had the opportunity to be able to serve with Councilman Ron Bagwell. But at this time, I'm going to ask the Coppidge family, if they would come to the stage, and this will be my last presentation. While the Coppidge family is coming, I had an opportunity to serve with Mike. Mike actually took the place of Michael Morris when he moved out of the city. So both of us were newbies on the council, but Mike had so much knowledge about working in government, because he'd been in all facets of government, even at the state level, but you never would have known how smart he was, because he wasn't an individual that flaunted what he knew. He was such a kind individual, and I remember when I was campaigning, this year or last year, a lot of times it runs together, but you know, when you're out walking door to door, and sometimes you really don't want anybody to come to the door, because you know, because of the relationship that you have with them, that you will probably be there for a while. So Judy, I tried to sneak up on the porch and put my little door knocker on there, and as I was walking down the driveway, Mike ran out of the house, and he and I sat there and had a conversation, and he wished me well. He was always supportive. When I ran for mayor in 2012, he was there, when I ran for mayor in 2020, he was there, so he's always been someone that I looked up to, and someone that I always felt like loved the city of Irondale. So I'm going to read his proclamation, and then also I'm going to share with everybody the little gift that you brought me today. And his proclamation... "Whereas Mike Coppidge lived a life of great service to his community, city, state, and nation. Whereas Mike Coppidge enlisted in the U.S. Army and served as a military police officer and investigator for the Criminal Investigative Division of the Department of the Army. Whereas Mike Coppidge served as the chief of the senior Birmingham Police Department, where he helped the city experience double-digit reductions in overall crime during his two years in office, and five years consecutive declines, including a fifteen-year low in overall crime rates. Whereas Mike Coppidge was named as the Colonel of the Alabama Department of Public Safety by then-Governor Rod Rodley, and was responsible for state troopers, the Alabama Bureau of Investigations, and also coordinated the state emergency management response efforts of federal, state, and local agencies. Whereas Mike Coppidge was appointed and served the city of Irondale on the city council. Whereas Mike Coppidge was named the Director of Public Safety and Emergency Management at Stanford University. Whereas Mike Coppidge earned his Associate Degrees of Law Enforcement from Jefferson State Community College, a Bachelor's of Science degree in criminal justice, and a Master's of Public Administration degree from the University of Alabama at Birmingham. Whereas Mike Coppidge completed the program for senior executives in state and local government at Harvard University, John F.K., School of Government, and is a graduate of both the FBI National Academy and the FBI National Executive Institute. Whereas Mike Coppidge was an outstanding mentor, leader, and friend. Now therefore, be it hereby resolved that I, James Douglas Stewart Jr., mayor of the city of Irondale, honor Mike Coppidge and his family with this proclamation. In witness whereof, I sign and seal on the seventh day of April, 2021." This is my little side story here, and it's also... So I'm going to be encouraging everyone to... B.J. Cobbin is responsible for the CERT program, and I know that we haven't had the CERT program here in a while, but I wanted to encourage her, start the program up, and to get everybody to go through it, because it's a very important program, and it can play a very vital role in the city of Irondale when we have disasters, and we can use those individuals that have already been trained to be able to free up our public works department, our fire department, and our police department, to be able to do those things that are very vital during those times. Hi, everybody, Judy came by the office today, and she wanted to let me know that she and Mike were both CERT certified, and that Mike was a part of the band hunt when Cupcake McKenny was actually missing in the city of Irondale. And I'll try not to cry, but she said, "I want to give you Mike's shirt, because he never put this shirt on, and I want to be able to give you his shirt, so when you go through the CERT Academy, you would be able to have Mike's shirt." So Judy, that meant a lot to me. She told me that it was an extra-large, I told her that I wear two X, so I may look like a muscle man in this shirt, or I may need to lose some pounds to be able to get into it, but Judy, I just wanted to let you know that this really meant a lot to me, and I will definitely wear this shirt close to my heart, and I will always remember, Mike, once I go through the certification and have an opportunity to serve, I will always think about you and Mike. Nobody wants to say anything, so Trudy was the one that got up here and said more than everybody. Judy, you know, again, I'd be remiss if I didn't say anything about Mike. I also served with Mike, maybe the oldest one up here, and served with everybody that's that we're honoring tonight, but certainly with Mike, and I've never said this, but I was a big fan of Mike's. You know how, when you, from afar, you just admire someone, and once I got a chance to know him by serving on the council, he was just a great guy to me, and everything that I had heard about him was true, and I just want you to know, I just, I really admired, really admired Mike. I always called him chief, when he was on the council, I called him chief, so he was a great guy, and I really liked him, I did. All right, guess it's my turn. I don't know if I can do as good of a job as the mayor, but we already spoke about Ron Bagwell, and if you don't mind, I would like to invite Ron Bagwell, Ron Bagwell's family up to the podium, if you don't mind. No, pardon. Well, I can't say, this is going to be really hard for me, because Ron was another council person I served with, but Ron and I, we had a special relationship, and we did. Ron was a guy, like the mayor said, he was probably smaller in stature, but he was a giant, he was, he was a genuine giant. As far as his personality, he was, he was just so mild-mannered, and you know, it was like the mayor stated, when Ron spoke, you know, everybody listened, because he was passionate, he didn't have a mean bone in his body, and he did. I asked him, you know, a person like yourself, "How did you get in politics without, you know, having some kind of meanness or some kind of tenacity?" But anyway, Ron was just, he was just this very nice guy, and I called him a friend, and I did, I called Ron a friend. But without further ado, I'll go ahead and read the proclamation. Okay. "Whereas Ron Ronald Ron Bagwell lived a life of great service to his community, city, state, and nation. Whereas Ronald Ron Bagwell worked at Anderson Electric, Square D, in Leeds, Alabama, for over thirty years before retiring. Whereas Ron Bagwell was a member of the International Association of Mechanists and Aerospace Workers Union, and served as the chairman of the union committee at Anderson Electric. Whereas Ron Bagwell was elected and proudly served as a member of the Irondale City Council from 2004 to 2012. Whereas Ron Bagwell was a dedicated leader, public servant, and community advocate. Whereas Ron Bagwell will be remembered for his love of sports and his devotion to the Alabama Crimson Tide, and he was. Whereas Ron Bagwell was a compassionate and loving husband, father, and friend. Now therefore, be it hereby resolved that James D. Stewart Jr., mayor of the city of Irondale, honor Ronald Ron Bagwell and his family with this proclamation."
Thank you, sir, for those presentations. Moving on, department heads, do we have any department heads that would like to deliver our report this evening?
Council President, I think we have a few verbal things that I wanted to say before I completed my report.
I'm sorry, I misunderstood, I thought you said that was the end of your report, so please, my all means.
Oh, I'm sorry, that was the end of my presentations.
End of the presentation, but not the end of the report, you got it.
Okay. You want to take it off? I just wanted to mention five things that's going to take place before we have our next city council meeting. April tenth to 2021, we're having a food giveaway in front of City Hall at nine AM in the morning. On that same day, April tenth, at ten o'clock, we're having a hiking with the mayor at Ruffner Nature Park, and we're going to meet in the parking lot. We're only going to walk the easiest route that is there, so I don't want anybody to turn away, because you think that you're going to hike up a mountain for about four miles, what we're going to do, maybe a mile or two. I think that all of us can do that, but I'd love to have you out to participate in that. Also, on Sunday or Saturday, I get my days mixed up, we kicked off Blueprint Irondale. I need everybody to go to blueprintirendale.com and to participate in that. I need everybody to go to blueprintirandale.com and to participate in the survey. Not only do I need you to participate in the survey, I need you to make sure everybody that you know participated in the survey because this will be your voice for what the city of Irondale should look like over the next five to twenty years. We are shooting for one thousand individuals to be able to participate. Uh, the reason why one thousand is the magic number because if you can have a thousand people to participate, it should be a large sample to be able to extract a statistical analysis from it, to be able to determine what the other thirteen thousand people in the city would like the city to look like. So, please go to blueprintirandale.com and fill out the survey. Also, we're having a kickoff here in City, uh, I don't think I'm at City Hall, but we're having a kickoff here on April fifteenth in the cafeteria. That's where you get an opportunity to basically throw whatever you wanna throw up against the wall and say, "This is what you want the city to be able to look like." We're gonna be able to create a vision statement out of that, but we will also be able to extract information that will help us to be able to determine what you want the city to look like. I'm only here to be able to facilitate the things that you want to do. Of course, I have a vision, but your vision supersedes anything that I can come up with. And if you don't wanna show up on the fifteenth because of COVID, you don't wanna participate in person, then on April nineteenth, we're having a online, uh, version of the same thing that we're gonna do on the fifteenth. So do you need to take both of them? No. If you take one and you get, we get your input, that'll be fantastic, but on April nineteenth, we're also doing that. Also, we've had an opportunity to partner with Christ Health Center for anyone that wants to get vaccinated. The only thing that you have to do is to fill out the application. Send it to Lee who's sitting on the front row. You do not have to put any of your personal information on there, social security number, medical information. We will let you do that once we submit your application to the health center. They have assured me that within twenty-four hours, they will call you and they will set up an appointment for you to be able to come in and to be able to get vaccinated. And they are doing the Pfizer, so you would have to set up an appointment twice to be able to do that. But I wanna say thank you to Christ Health Center, uh, for allowing the city of Irondale to be able to partner with them to be able to do that. And last, but not least, I don't know if you saw it on Facebook yesterday, but Christopher Cruz and myself had an opportunity, uh, to sit down and allow the past to be the past. Whistlestop has not been in the city of Irondale in the last three years. But, you know, why should we continue to carry forward stuff that really has nothing to do with allowing our citizens to be able to annually to have a good time? So he and I have agreed in principle, and there's some other things that have to be worked out, and the council still has to approve the agreement. But he and I have talked in principle about bringing the whistlestop back to the city of Irondale on Saturday, October the second, twenty twenty-one. That's all I have to say. Council President Spabey and I thank you for giving me this opportunity to be able to share these words with the citizens of Irondale.
And, uh, thank you, Mayor, for doing so. And just to confirm, was that October the second or October the seventh? I'm sorry.
October the second.
Second. Thank you, sir. And I believe we did not have any department head reports at this time. We move into our individual reports now, uh, for council members, standing committees, or special committee reports. Uh, Councilman Box will start with you. Uh, I have no- okay, fair enough. Councilwoman Quayor will start with you.
I'd like to take this opportunity to thank the, uh, Public Works Department. I understand you've been working extremely hard around the Highway eleven area, trying to clear all that debris. And, uh, then you're playing catch-ups along all of the districts, the residents. And I want you to know, and please extend my gratitude to the, uh, team on the, uh, public, in the Public Works Department. Uh, they've done a fantastic job, and I appreciate all the work that you're doing. And that's all I have to report.
Thank you. Uh, Councilwoman London, you report?
Uh, first of all, a good evening to everyone. Uh, just so happy to be here and happy to see you here. I just wanna echo what, uh, Mayor and Councilman Wilson about, uh, Mike and, uh, Mary Ellen Ramsey and Ron Bagwell. Uh, fantastic guys. Now, now, Ellen Ramsey was special, but he was a Birmingham Southern guy. And so he was real special to us and myself because of the, the ties we've had together. Talking about the Birmingham Southern days, and so I just wanna say thank you for your service, for all that they've done, you know. And I know your wives, uh, have to be selfish also for allowing them to, to serve the city of Irondale. So we just wanna thank you. I know we gave them a proclamation, but we will also thank the wives for allowing them to serve our city of Irondale.
Amen.
Amen, that's right. Behind every good woman, or a good man, you find a woman. But besides every good man, you find a woman, and they had good wives. So I just wanna thank you for, for giving them to us for all those years. Thank you. And truly, I wanna say thank you, we have had multiple conversations about, uh, human trafficking. And if you don't know anything about human trafficking, if you don't know anything, I'm telling you, you better learn. Because Interstate twenty is the hotbed for human trafficking, and it's coming right through your city. You got, if you got grandkids, daughters, and see the thing about, and not just about girls. If you got kids, grandsons, daughters, whatever, you need to be involved with this human trafficking thing. In fact, Trudy, your, your, your building will be full with people, uh, that's trying to find more about this human traffic. Because it's real, it's real. And I also have a daughter, and I also have granddaughters, and I also have little grandsons that I, I worry about every day. Every day my daughter leaves the house. I worry about her, if someone will snatch her up and put it inside her car, and like Mayor, Mayor Stewart said, never see her again. So it's real, and we all, the city of Irondale, need to get behind Trudy's effort that she's doing, you know, with this human trafficking. So I wanna applaud you and your organization, uh, for what you're doing. Thank you. Also, uh, yes, also, we, we had a meeting, talking about the youth sports. Uh, we had a meeting with the high school, all of the, uh, high school coaches. Uh, we had the principals at the middle school and here, a great meeting yesterday. And I'll be filling the rest of the council, you know, I'm filling the rest of the council, we couldn't have but two there, so, you know, we'll have, we'll have three, you get in trouble. Uh, but I'll be filling the rest of the council. So where we are now, each head coach will go and bring a plan to us how they gonna start their youth programs. And then we'll have a conversation about that, so that's where we are with the youth program. So we're trying to vary it back, we're trying to think that, think out of the box, that maybe not gonna cost the city a lot of money. Thank you, thank you, Council President.
Thank you, sir. Uh, Councilman Wilson? Your report, sir? Oh, okay, thank you. Thanks, Senator.
Thank you, Senator.
I don't think I'm gonna go, uh, did you switch it?
I didn't.
This course, I don't think I'm gonna go.
I, I'll try to talk loud enough. Um, first, I would like to kinda echo, uh, what Council London mentioned about yesterday, uh, the meeting that we had with the principals and the, uh, coaches at the middle and high school level. Uh, it was a, it was a meeting that was, uh, very well attended, uh, very much needed. And if we could just bring everyone in because, you know, we, we all live in the city. And we all wanna see our city flourish. Uh, in order to do that, it has, we have to have participation among everyone that lives in this community. As we go outside of Irondale, you and I both know, we go to particular communities, and I won't call any names. But we go to some of these communities and the parks are just flooded with families. Uh, the parks are just flooded with kids. Uh, it's very important that we come together. Like Council London said, we come together and make these, this thing work, and it starts with our youth. And I'm so excited, uh, with the meeting, uh, that we had yesterday. Council London did an excellent job as far as communicating, uh, what was needed. And like I mentioned yesterday, it starts with us because you guys put us here uh, to be not only good stewards, but to be participants and to, uh, have integrity and to do what is right in the city of Irondale. So I would like to just thank publicly, I would like to thank Council London for putting everything together. And hopefully, we could, uh, kinda forward that information onto the other councillors. Uh, because it not only takes one, it takes all of us. It always has been that way, you know, one vote is not no more important than, than the rest. So it takes a collective effort, uh, among all of us. Next, I wanna just announce the, uh, Holiday Gardens Neighborhood Associate, Association meeting. It's next Tuesday, uh, at six thirty. Again, I'm saying Holiday Gardens, but everybody is invited. Uh, don't think that just because you don't live in Holiday Gardens, you don't have a, a say-so, or you don't wanna know what's going on. Everyone is invited, so I just wanted everyone to know that, uh, next Tuesday at six thirty, there'll be a Holiday Gardens Neighborhood Association meeting. It's virtual, we haven't started, uh, back in-person meetings as of yet. So therefore, uh, there's a link that goes out, and if you're interested in joining, uh, our meeting, just contact City Hall and they will be able to provide you, uh, the information. And Mayor, I just, uh, probably flooded your office with calls, I apologize for that. Next, since we're talking about kids, since we're talking about youth sports, uh, I want to, if you don't mind, uh, Council President, just real quick, um, just, I just wanna make a presentation. Uh, if, um, the principal, did we have a principal either from the middle school or the high school in Shades Valley here with us tonight? I'm sorry, I can't see, out in the, out in the audience. Okay, alright, Dr. Dallas. Dallas, if you don't mind, can you come up? Council London, you're definitely still. Uh, on behalf of, uh, the city and also through my discretion and funds, I would just like to present these checks to, uh, not only Shades Valley, but there's a check that'll be coming to, uh, Irondale Middle School as well, uh, to be used with the kids and, uh, at your school and you guys' discretion. So I just wanted to go ahead and present this to you. And, uh, just wanna thank you for the outstanding job that you're doing, uh, with our middle school kids. Uh, like I say, it's not only about one student or one person, it takes a collective effort. So you really wanna appreciate what you're doing for our Irondale Middle School. And congratulations for the dormitory as well, okay?
Thank you, sir. And Councilwoman Quayor, you had a follow-up?
Yes, a follow-up, there was one that I overlooked and certainly, uh, is, is worthy of being recognized. And that is, I'd like to extend my gratitude to our legal counsel, Ms. Danielson and her partner Rod. They went the extra mile for the city council to make it possible for us to sign those, the two resolutions and the ordinance that needed to be done so that we could continue with the grocery store. Uh, ladies and gentlemen, it's coming. As the mayor said, it's coming, it's coming, and coming. But there's a lot of pieces to this puzzle, and Ms. Danielson and her partner Rod went the extra mile to make it possible, literally, to the bell. And so I really, really wanna thank you for that.
Thank you for that. Yes, sometimes we do feel to, uh, to appreciate our attorneys, um, in person, so thank you as well. Uh, as far as my report, I would like to echo, uh, Councilwoman Quayor, uh, in regards to Frank, your department in Public Works. I know y'all have been doing a ton of stuff on Highway eleven in the Roebuck Plaza area. And what you identified to me earlier about the culvert that y'all uncovered and got that replaced. I know that's gonna make a huge difference when it comes down to, uh, the drainage in that area. So a big thank you for not only just being out there, being present, but finding a problem and just go ahead and, and just getting it fixed. So I know that the residents truly appreciate you, and I appreciate you for that as well, so thank you. As far as any other reports tonight, I do not have one. So we will move on to our next agenda item. That would be reports of boards and non-council committees. Do we have any other reports for boards? Uh, yes, sir. Uh, John Shum, I do believe, I see your hand up there.
Yes, sir, I'd like to mention a few things about the exchange fund. Uh, we are, with the help of our mayor, we are extending, uh, gifts and packages to new residents of Irondale. Uh, we've started on it, we've got about a hundred and something, and we're, Sue Miles is heading up that program. And, uh, we've done about, I guess, twenty so far, right, Sue? Uh, also, the exchange fund has got a meeting next Tuesday at eleven o'clock. The mayor's gonna make a presentation there, and we have two other people. We do have live meetings, and we are at the Jubilee Center just down, just down from City Hall. So give me a call or somebody at City Hall will point you in the right direction for us, for, for you to meet with us. Uh, we do exercise distances, and, uh, it's, uh, live. We'd like to be able to talk with people. And, uh, also, like we, uh, have, I'd like to mention, we haven't done this in a fact. We mentioned, we did Freedom Shrine with the help of the mayor, uh, at Irondale Communities, Irondale Middle School. And, uh, Principal Dallas was fantastic and helped us out putting it together, and that was about a thousand dollars plus. And it's all the documents, really important documents of our history. And hopefully, the teachers are using that in order to work with the students. Um, it, uh, took a little bit of work, Sue, made a real effort, and, and four or five other exchange acts put together and put them out along the wall. So if you get an opportunity to go to the school, just left right across from the library, it's quite a display. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir.
I hate to put someone on the spot. Oh, oh, they have raised their hand. I was just about to put somebody on the spot, but they went ahead and raised their hand anyway, so. Can we acknowledge our director?
Absolutely. Uh, Julie, for the Chamber of Commerce, please, you have the floor.
Hi, uh, lots of fun things. I have a, one thing that I get questions about all the time is, is there commercial property? And then what can we do to visit Irondale for vacation? So on our website live right now, if you look at irondellcoc.com, stands for Chamber of Commerce, uh, scroll over to Irondale Links, and there is a place for commercial properties. My goal would be to see that all of our members get to list commercial properties free. Uh, non-members are three hundred dollars for the year, which is nothing. So, uh, we hope that we can have a catalog of commercial properties. So if you know somebody that has commercial property, please elbow them or reach out to me. I'm director at irondellcoc.com. And then our next project is to work on a tourism link with everything fun to do in Irondale. And I even would like to put together a travel destination trip quarterly that would involve, um, historical events, historical speakers, um, train history, and even a cooking class, because we have a commissary here in Irondale. So those are what's on the horizon. Thank you.
Thank you, Julie.
Could you make a comment about the golf tournament?
Oh, yes, there's so much going on. Uh, the chamber has been active this whole past year, and we are having our golf tournament on May tenth. We have room for about four more sponsors, and we have room, if we just hit just our main number, for four more teams, and then we can go over that as well. So if you have friends or vendors that you work with, feel free to, um, come out, right, David? Alright, thank you, thank you.
No, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank, uh, thank you as well, Julie, for that. And, uh, any other reports of boards or non-council committees at this time? Okay? At this time, we found ourselves at, at the moment for deliberation on agenda items only. So we have two items under unfinished business. Uh, one would be Resolution twenty twenty-one R twenty-one that declares the property at twenty-three oh five First Avenue South, Irondale, Alabama, three five two one oh, a public nuisance and order its abatement. Uh, this was something we discussed, uh, at our last, not our special meeting, but the one prior to that. Uh, so, uh, we'll be building questions and comments here momentarily on that. And then our second item under unfinished business is Resolution twenty twenty-one R twenty-five, authorizes the mayor to enter into an intergovernmental agreement for the North Alabama Cooperative Purchasing Association. So as far as item number one goes, uh, Councilwoman London, uh, I would start on your side. Have you had any follow-up questions that's developed since the last time we spoke on this?
Well, I guess one question is, we're already with the building. I suspect, I think I inspected you. I've seen that too. Okay, chief.
Can I give, can we get an update on, on what happened between now and then?
No permits have been pulled and no access has been taken on the house.
Thank you.
I'm going to ask if we can renotice, uh, this piece of property. I'm going to ask if we can renotice, uh, this piece of property because initially it had some language in it that we need to clear up. And instead of proceeding with this resolution that we have in front of us tonight, I'm going to ask if we can postpone this indefinitely and just create a new resolution, uh, but to make sure that the resolution have the proper language in it.
Councilman Wilson, any questions, especially with what's this room? Councilman Box?
Not at this moment.
Not at this moment?
When we talk about postponing indefinitely, are you talking about until our next council meeting?
No, postponing something indefinitely means that this resolution in the current form and format, we will no longer address it. But we will renotice them by sending them another letter with the proper language in it. And then we would have a different resolution to be able to speak to the issue.
Okay. And how long do you take, think that will take?
The notice would be twenty-one days.
Okay. So we're looking at about a month?
Yes.
Okay.
Based upon the, the city council, you know, actual meeting schedule, yes.
Thank you.
And, uh, so I'm basically just for, just for everybody, and I just want to make sure I'm understanding. There was some, obviously some language in the previous notice that does not cover what needed to be said. So we were advised by legal in order to rework, rerun that, correct?
That is correct.
Gotcha. Understood. Perfect. All right. So now we find ourselves, uh, ready for deliberational item two under new business. Uh, Mayor, uh, if, let's see, if you would go ahead and just kind of readdress that?
Talk about number two?
Yes, sir.
Uh, number two is where the fire department is joining a cooperative so that they can purchase the equipment that they would like to outfit their vehicles with, instead of having to put it out for a public bid. So the co-op just allows us to meet the requirements of the state of Alabama of not having to do an RFP and go through that long bid process. But the vendor has already been fitted by this co-op. And the only thing that we're doing is just using the co-op as a conduit to be able to outfit the vehicles with the equipment that we would like to put on the vehicles.
Thank you, sir. Uh, Councilman London, any questions regarding this? Councilman Wilson?
No questions.
Councilman Box?
Uh, the only question I have on this, uh, brought up, we don't have any local vendors or anything that, that does that.
Uh, that is correct.
Councilman Quayle?
Yes, Councilman Box, you addressed one of the questions I had had to do with our local businesses and they don't offer this. And then our legal counsel answered my other questions, so I'm satisfied.
And I do not have any further questions on this matter either. Thank you. We find ourselves at new business. That would be, uh, item number one, Resolution twenty twenty-one R thirty, would appoint Mike Davis to the, uh, to the abatement board. And that would be, uh, until, Mayor, I need a little help on the term. I cannot remember the terms on that. Uh, but that is, uh, that is due to someone resigning. So I'm not sure if we're just filling that for the time slot or if this is a new. So if you could just kind of align this on that.
Okay. The terms for the abatement board runs with the terms of the council. So every four years, you're supposed to reappoint, uh, new individuals, uh, to the abatement board. They could actually serve for two consecutive four-year terms, but technically their terms end when the council terms end. And also, the mayor has an opportunity to appoint two individuals to the board as well. Uh, one of those individuals has to be a engineer or a technical person, uh, that knows the ins and outs about structures to be able to help the abatement board, to be able to work through those steps. So Mr. Mike Davis with Cox Pools, he's sitting out there, uh, in the audience. And, uh, he would be a replacement for District One. And Marcus Ferris, who lives in the bin, would actually be the replacement for District Two. And both of those individuals would serve until the end of this council's term.
Perfect. Thank you very much. So until, until twenty twenty-four. Um, any questions on, from the, from the board on item number one or two under new business? Councilman London? And Councilman Wilson? Okay, understood. What was your recommendation as far as the actual number that goes along with that? Okay. Uh, were there any questions, Councilman Wilson?
Yes. Did we have these individuals, did we have these individuals available here, uh, tonight, here with us tonight? Could you, could you stand?
Yeah.
I'm sorry. I'm old age or fifty, so I just want to make sure who you are.
Yeah, I'm Mike Davis.
Okay. Does basketball Mike Davis play?
No. Hey, Joe.
And, uh, Councilman Wilson, Marcus is recovering from surgery, uh, but he's the individual, African-American individual, he's serving a council meeting in a wheelchair. That's Marcus.
He's also lead, uh, he's also involved with, um, the Neighborhood Association in the bin and kind of spearheading that as well. He has a lot of interest in the area. So I appreciate his, uh, his willingness to get involved. So that takes us through, uh, Councilman Box, did you have any questions?
Oh, no.
Oh, one or two? Councilman, uh, Councilman Quayle?
No questions.
And then myself. Uh, no questions either. Item number three under new business, Resolution twenty twenty-one R thirty-two, appoints David Rossen to the Commercial Development Authority Board. And then until, uh, Councilman Quayle, this has got your name on it, but at first, uh, before I defer to you, um, if I can get legal to kind of explain this a little bit. Ms. Danielson, if you, if you would mind kind of bringing us up to speed on David Rossen, CDA, non-Adam?
Yes, um, some, actually, and this was, this occurred prior to my, my tenure. Um, by, by state, state law, there are supposed to be three CDA board members who hold the same, same term. And then two CDA members who also, you know, hold these, the same, same, same term. So that you have three members rolling off and then you have two members rolling off. Due to some, um, some action, the block of two council, two CDA members have become staggered. And so this ap- appointment would bring that back into, to, to alignment, such that they would both roll off in twenty twenty-four. And so this appointment, where it usually would be for a four-year term, this would be for a three-year term, such that it, it would align those two board members' terms.
Thank you, ma'am. And then Councilman Quayle, do you have any other follow-up comments? This is Caroline Ives?
And, and one of the things that Ms. Danielson, in trying to, uh, make this to where these terms are staggered, the Alabama Code, as it's written, said that when you do have these instances, so it's not an isolated case, these are things that do happen. Uh, they recommend that the current board member could be held over until you can get them back in order. So in this case, uh, David Rossen, who is currently serving as the CDA's treasurer, his term would be held over until three of twenty twenty-four. Uh, and it would be very helpful to the CDA because when I resigned in September of twenty twenty, this, I was serving as the Secretary Treasurer and the board elected Mr. Rossen as their next treasurer. And what that means is everyone has to go to the banks, uh, and new signature cards have to be drawn up. And it is a long, tedious process. And the CDA board just went through that. So this would be a means of allowing him to continue to serve as the treasurer. He's done an outstanding job as a treasurer. And, uh, it would be a whole lot easier, uh, with the CDA, with the current projects that they've got going on. Uh, the chairman, uh, David Q is unable to be with us here tonight because he's a lawyer and he had some clients and they had some legal things that they had to work with, with the clients. And so he's unable to be here. But David Rossen is here. Uh, David, would you please stand? Uh, do you have any comments that you'd like to make, Mr. Rossen?
Uh, no comments. Just, uh, look forward to the opportunity, opportunity to continue to serve.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. In reference to this particular appointment, um, Councilman Quayle, just, just a couple of questions. Have we had any other interest in this particular position? Has it been announced that we have?
The, the board felt?
I'm not finished.
Okay.
I'm not finished. Have we announced that this position was open due to, you know, the CDA as far as those terms, trying to get back online?
Uh, no, Councilman Wilson, because what we went by was the Alabama Code, which said that when you have instances like this, the best way to do it, to expedite the process, is to exercise the holdover, which is in the Alabama Code. And this is what the, uh, board and our legal counsel, uh, recommended that we do.
You, in your first statement, you said it could be. You, this person could be held over. That's what you said at the beginning.
The law says that you can do that. Yes.
It, it, it could be. But my question is, have we had any other interest? And you said no. Um, I understand the continuity of whatever the case may be in this particular position because it is important having a treasurer. But I'm sure we have a lot of competent individuals, citizens out in the city of Irondale that could do the same job as far as, that could be my job, uh, Mr. Ransom, Ransom job, or anybody's job.
Rossen. It's David Rossen.
I'm sorry. Yeah. Um, so that's why I asked that question. Do we have anyone else that has showed interest? And you said no. So I'm just wondering why this wasn't announced or it wasn't, you know, put on the board or, or, or put out there for other individuals to be, you know, considered. That's all.
It wasn't announced, Councilman Wilson, as I stated earlier, because our legal counsel said the Alabama Code makes the provisions for cases such as this, uh, which will certainly make it much more easier for the CDA to continue to function with the projects, projects that they have. And, uh, and we felt that in the best interest of the CDA, that that would be the best approach. Instead of advertising and having the city clerk, you have all these resumes. When we have Mr. Rossen that's willing to continue to serve, uh, and is doing an outstanding job without having to go to the banks, uh, if, if the council makes another appointment, to have to go to the banks and come up with more signature cards and have the CDA elect another treasurer, we felt that this was in the best interest of the CDA to leave things as they are and allowing to be held over until three of twenty twenty-four.
I understand the state code, but you said it can happen. In your first statement, you said it could.
And again, in the best interest of the CDA, this is why this recommendation is being made.
Councilman London?
Uh, yes, uh, first of all, um, now this provision is only a suggestion and is not really the law. Uh, but anyway, the question I have, the question I have is this. So yours, how long, I'm asking you, how long does it take to get new cards? Is that a two-day process? Is that a six-month process? Is that a week process? How long does it take to get new bank cards for the CDA?
The person that opens the account wants the three signatories there at one time to sign the signature card. And that is where it's a challenge, Councilman London.
Is, is that a week process? Is that a month process? Is that a two-month process?
You have, you have to get three CDA board members there at one time. One is a lawyer, another is a banker, Mr. Rossen is a banker, and, uh, the third party is, works for IBM.
So you're saying, uh, they are volunteer board members that don't have time to make that happen?
They have time to make it happen, but you need them there. And Mr. Spiggy can, can also answer that question. When you're trying to get the parties involved and you're, you're needing to get these signature cards available. It is a tedious process and it is something that people need to take time off of work, uh, to try and meet there at the same time to change out these signature cards and get these, these signatures all at one time.
I, I understand that because, but that's, they understood that, uh, when they, they volunteered for the board, they understood that process, that they may have to take some time off of work. So here's, here's my question. Uh, you know, I heard, I heard, we talk about transparency all the time. And I heard you talk about it, even since you've been on council, about transparency. Uh, I know my councilperson here that didn't know that his seat was up. You know, we went through a whole process of, uh, interviewing different, uh, CDA members and his seat never came up as being expired. Is any reason for that, for us not to know that?
There is, because this issue was brought up approximately two months ago. And in discussing it with our legal counsel, uh, this is the advice that she, that she recommended. And so once we had that and the resolutions, she had to draw up the resolutions for us, um, I was wanting to bring this up at our council meeting that was held, uh, I believe it was in February. But we weren't able to do it because the chairman, David Q, uh, was unable to be at the council meeting. And again, he was supposed to be here this evening and we were not able to have him speak on behalf of the CDA as well. But yeah, the intent was to bring it up in February. We had some conflicts. He wasn't able to do it. Uh, uh, one of the reasons, of course, was that he was diagnosed with COVID nineteen, therefore he could not come in February.
So my question to you again, this is not about Mr. Q, not about David Rossen. Uh, you and I have been in city council meeting, sitting next to one another, and I didn't know anything about his appointment. Uh, so why have I, I haven't I been privileged?
Because we needed to get the legal documents. We had to have everything in order, sir.
So you couldn't, whisper in my ear and say, hey, David Q's, his seat is coming up. Even during the process, who's, who's going through the process? And it took us a time, while we go through the process, but, but his name never came up of being expired. We talked about transparency.
Right. I, I am a believer in transparency. And this is why, when I met with the chairman, I said, are we ready to go ahead and come before the council and present this? And he said, I've been diagnosed with COVID. I'm not gonna be able to be there.
Okay. My, my next question, I have one more question. Uh, you know, our, our boards, this, this is what I believe, our boards, our city council, our boards needs to look more like our city. And if we appoint Mr. Rossen, and maybe you have to, I don't know because, you know, I don't, I'm not privileged to those meetings. I'm not privileged to any information that goes on the CDA because that's, that never, never came to me. But if you put Mr. Rossen on the, back on the board again, we would have no female representation on this board. And so what you're telling me, you're telling me that we don't have a female qualified in this city that wants to be part of this board that can do the same thing. And we have a accountant, Mark Q, already on. So he's not the only one that does financial. We have, you have an accountant on the board already that can do what David Rossen's doing. So this board would, if you, we put it back on there, the board would not look like the city of Irondale wants to look like because it would be a board full of male, and I'm a man, and no female representation.
And I'll have you respond to that question, Councilman London. As a matter of fact, to fill my vacancy, there was a woman. Her name was Elaine. And, and you and Councilman Wilson voted to appoint Mark Q. We had a female. And you chose, and that's who the board recommended. And you chose not to appoint her. And you chose not to appoint her?
Because David Rossen never was told, we were never told that his seat was up. If we were told that his seat was up, I promise you, she would be on this board.
Point of order, we're going to go ahead and...
No, that's my question, so...
We'll have more opportunities to speak on this in a moment. Mayor?
I just want to be able to speak to the issue. This is more of a recommendation than anything. I've been involved with the CDA for over 20 years, I actually served on the CDA for 70 years. And whenever someone's seat came up to be reappointed, it was always noticed to the community for 30 days and given everybody in the city an opportunity to be able to submit their application to be a part of the CDA. I don't see why we should change that process now, because this will be the first time that I know of that an individual is appointed to the CDA and it wasn't open for other applicants to be able to submit their resume to be interviewed for the council for the position. So I believe that if the council adopts this resolution, then you set a precedence going forward that there's no need of taking applications going forward, because you've already decided if somebody was on there and if they want to serve another term, you don't give any other individuals an opportunity to be able to serve. Just go ahead and reappoint them and just keep moving until that person decides that they do not want to serve. So my recommendation about fairness, if everybody else has had to submit an application and come before the council and be interviewed for the position, although this term is out of sync, I believe that the same process should be followed. It has nothing to be able to do with getting a signature at the bank. You can do that in one day if everybody go to the bank and sign the cards and get all of that taken care of. The CDA is in very good shape financially. They have some very astute Board members. And I believe that as this process is opened up and given other people to submit their application, they will not have an issue of surviving and being able to conduct their business until that seat is filled.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilman Wilson, based on what has already been said, do you have any follow-up comments?
No.
No, it's all, it's already been said, understood. Councilman Box, any follow-up comments?
Yeah, I think I've got to work, but I, I think I've got to make it up voice. What I see here is I think our legal counsel did say that our most expeditious path is actually reappointed. Now, in that situation, sometimes expeditiousness is the best path, because it allows us to go forward uninterrupted in a flow of business during a critical timeframe. Being a businessman myself, that is a situation that is most important on several factors. Now, I, I would say this, is there a possibility, and this is just because I'm a novice at political here, is there a possibility that this gentleman is going to continue to serve through these projects that we have on the table that are very important? So, or can we do a temporary appointment that extends his appointment temporarily as we're viewing other applicants?
Well, I would say right now, and I know for the last five or six months I've been at the CDA meeting, because they hosted the meeting in the mayor's office. There is nothing that is pending right now that you can't allow other people to submit their application to be considered. Mr. Rossen has a right to be able to submit his application if he wants to be able to serve. And if he's appointed by the council, that is not a problem. The problem is you're doing a process that you've never done before and there's no emergency out there that this has to be done without giving the other 13,000 citizens in the city of Irondale an opportunity to submit their application. If nobody submits their application, then he's reappointed. But we're always talking about equality, we're always talking about transparency, we're always talking about being fair. I don't see why we throw it out the window this time for this appointment, when I've sat here since November the 2nd and everything has been requested that we follow it to the letter of the law.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. That, that answered my question. I just was under the impression that this...
To clarify what I was asked to look at, the issue that I was asked to look at was how to level out the two terms of the Board, Board members. That's what I was asked to look at. So I, I was not asked to look at, you know, an, an, an expeditious way or anything like that. It was solely how to line up those two terms that should be, should be aligned by state law.
So we're not in a critical scenario for a board appointment at this point in time?
Well, based upon the reading of the law, if you were to choose to go through the normal appointment process at this point, you know, David Rossen would hold office until his successor was elected.
Okay, very good. And then that allows us to still have a person serving at this point, thank you.
And one final question, one final comment. I think Councilman McClair wants to clarify specifically why this came up and then at that point we will move on to continue to liberate our items and we will readdress what we choose to do with this item when it comes up for Agenda B. Please clarify your position.
The issue of transparency has come up and I am definitely one that believes in transparency. We did not learn, and I'm speaking about the CDA, about this issue of this term expiring until approximately a little over two months ago. And once that was learned, we immediately met with our legal counsel and asked and said, if we go with the Alabama Code the way the statute is written, these terms are every four years and they have to be staggered. We have three members on the CDA Board who have been appointed to four-year terms. Their terms will expire in 2022. We have one Board member that was just reappointed last November. His term expires in 3/2024. Mr. Rossen's term is the one that was not. And when we found out that his term had expired, we asked our legal counsel, what is the best way so that they can be staggered? And we can have two members whose terms expire in 2024 and three Board members whose terms expire in 2022. And this was the best way that we could have it done. If you open up and you have people apply, that will be for a four-year appointment. That term is not staggered. That term will expire in 3/2026, not 3/2024.
Thank you. Item number 2021 R 33.
Council President?
Yes, sir.
Just for the record, I'm not going to comment on that, but there are several other ideas, whatever, in, in, in response to what Councilman Quayle just mentioned.
I understand that.
For the record, I do want you to know.
I understand and I appreciate that feedback. Item number four, Resolution 2021 R 33, Implementing Policies and Procedures for Discretionary Funds. Councilman McClair, have you had any discussion with the council on this at all yet? Other than what we perceive?
This was brought up at the council meeting when the issue of discretionary funds was first mentioned. And when I met with our mayor discussing the budget, that was one of my concerns, which had to do with the Alabama Code, the public, the public purpose doctrine. And in working up the draft, the mayor agreed to have me draw up the draft, which I did, and also passed the draft by our legal counsel, who had recommendations that she made. Those recommendations were implemented into this proposal that you have. It has gone through the legal purview and we would be in compliance with the Alabama Code, which is the public purpose doctrine, so that everything is documented. And if anyone wants to know how these discretionary funds are being spent, that is public record, you will have access to that.
Thank you. Councilman London? Any questions on this particular agenda?
Councilman Quayle, in, in the beginning, we were talking about the, the budget and you had a, kind of, you had a problem with the discretionary funds. And one of your problems was that you weren't going to use your funds for your community, for your neighborhood, for your district. So if you're not going to use your fund, I guess my question is, why would you try to put a document on the table for us to write, our own funds?
Is that second clear question? You ready for readdressing? Okay.
I did not want to use my discretionary funds until I was absolutely sure that it would be in compliance with the public purpose doctrine. Everything that is in this document is in compliance with the public purpose doctrine.
So, you, so my next question, you know, Mr. President. So I've been on council for eight years and, and one thing that protects me is the Alabama Ethics Code. And a lot of things that you have in here, I've already did that ethics. And I have my, my certificate to show you if you need that. So everything that's here, we abide by the Alabama Ethics Code. And so I don't think personally we need a document when we, all we have is our Alabama State Code is already in place to regulate how we use these, these funds.
Would you like her to readdress that question?
I just want to readdress it.
Okay.
We never had anything in written format. These are taxpayer funds and we are obligated to our taxpayers to give an accounting of how we are expending their funds.
Again, taxpayer, I hear that a lot too. I think I am a taxpayer, just want to make clear that I do, I do pay taxes. Here to sit right now, but here's, here's my next question. What do you consider the viability and legal nonprofit organization and other government organization when it comes to this document? What do you consider those to be?
What, what the wording says, sir, it says nonprofit organizations.
So what do you consider those, name some of those projects?
Anyone that's a nonprofit organization. It could be United Way, it could be a boys' club. Anyone that provides services in the city of Irondale would qualify as a nonprofit. Or if there's any organization here in Irondale that is a nonprofit, they would qualify to be considered to receive discretionary funds.
All right, next question. What other benefits of a public or private party, this is your document, what other benefit that you've deemed for us to use these funds as for our, for our districts? And unless they're our district, because we can cross district if we see the need in Irondale. So what are some of those benefits that you perceive?
Well, if there is, if there is a, a district that has a need for, let's say, maybe they need some help with speed bumps or something of that sort, and, and you're needing some assistance with that, I would certainly be open to helping you out with that.
So is that considered a nonprofit organization?
It's not considered, but they're a part of Irondale and, and that, that would fall under this.
You through that one? I got plenty more, I'm going to get someone else to say it.
Yes, the Russian, yes. I put the document together and I'm happy to answer that question.
I'm going to ask someone else, I don't want to listen to that. So how would you determine the speculative nature of the expenditures?
That's up to the council members discretion, based on what the individual writes down, speculative nature, that is according to the public, public purpose doctrine that is taken directly from that document, sir. And that is what is written in that document and that is what is reiterated in this document and it leads it to the discretion of the council member.
Because you have a document here, you have a document here at the end. It's, it's the conflict of interest policy that I've already done with the Alabama Ethics Commission. So why would I do it twice when it's already on file for the Alabama Ethics Commission?
Because what we are doing here is we are expending taxpayer funds and it is on record. So if a taxpayer wants to see that, they will have the opportunity to, to, to look at that.
I'm, I'm sorry, I have more, but I'll listen to that.
Please. Councilman Wilson, anything that has not been addressed already?
No, I didn't, no, I just want to make a, just one comment. You know, the power and authority to spend municipal funds, you said by state code, but it resides with the city council under Alabama Code 11-43-43. That's what I was reading right now. So in no reference, there's no reference to the expenditure of discretionary funds that can be made by the city council when we already have a state code to go by. And that's 11-43-43.
Right, and the code also talks about the public purpose doctrine. So anything that a, that a council would define that would fall under that, and that's why the public purpose doctrine was used as the guide. This is why we incorporated that language that is Alabama Code and it is incorporated in this document.
So I, I don't believe, I don't believe we need another document when we already have the state code to go by. Now, I understand you use the public purpose. I would like, we talked about transparency earlier, and I'll make it real quick. Whatever funds we use for our discretionary funds, it need to be made up. We need to put it on the website. It, it doesn't matter what it is. I, I totally agree with that. But having another document, when we already have a, a, a law that's stated in the Alabama State Code of how those funds need to be used, I don't feel it's necessary. That's all I have.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Box?
Councilman Wilson, I think, answered most of my questions on there. If, if we've already got guidelines, policies and procedures in place, are, are any of those guidelines, policies and procedures that have hold? Is that what your, your notice, Councilman Quayle, that have hold? Or if, if we don't see a serious hold, then I think that Council, Councilman London and Councilman Wilson have a very good point that why do we need to overcomplicate something as long as it is open and accessible to the public as it stands?
I'm happy to answer that question. Throughout the many years that I've been attending council meetings, there have been several organizations that have approached the city council and there's never been any written format for them to fill out a form and for that form to be submitted to the council or a council member. And this makes it easy for the council member, it makes it easy for the city clerk to give out that form to the organization that is requesting funding and it is in written format and it expedites the process and it keeps everything simple. It's called the KISS philosophy, keep it simple stupid. This makes it easy for any organization to fill out a form and submit it. We have a uniform way of doing that without trying to come up with answers as to why you're denying a request for funding. Everyone knows what the requirements are. Everyone can submit the form and it leads it up to the council member to use or not use their discretionary funds. And they reply, they submit that either to the city clerk, who will then send out the discretionary funds that have been requested, or the council member will in turn explain why this request has been denied. It simplifies the process, it's uniform and therefore no one can say, well, gee, where's that council member? They just did it because they don't like me. No, there are things that we need to follow and it expedites the process, it keeps it simple and it's uniform. That's the reason for this.
Thank you. A question I have for you, and I might have misread the document, but it looks like in this report, obviously, the discretionary expense goes into the expense report. And basically, Councilman Wilson, I'm not, I'm not picking on you or anything like that, but say for instance, if I have a discretionary expenditure that I see fit that meets the code, but yet when it comes up for a vote, it appears that someone could vote that, that discretionary fund down. And I find that that goes against the philosophy of what it is for. I would appreciate any comments on that.
Yes, when the forms are submitted, the city clerk has that information and we have the guidelines that are written there for a council member to follow. And as long as that criteria is met, then there is no reason for those funds to be objected to by a council member.
Councilman London, you had several questions. Okay, Mayor?
I think this will clear up a lot of the confusion. I thought we had it somewhere in the Code of Ordinance, but if you look in the City Council Code of Ordinance, Section 299, you will see that there, we already have a section called Use of Public Funds by Any Community Organization. And this section spells out what a community organization, or I heard that this was developed for nonprofit organizations, we already have an ordinance, we already have, already have a section in the code that deals with that, which means that we either have to repeal this section or we have to amend it, but I just wanted to let everybody know that we're basically arguing or discussing something that we already have a set of rules. The only thing we have to do is just follow the current rules that we have in place. Now, I think it's a good idea to have a standardized form that everybody can fill out so the people submit it to the counselor, it's in a standard form, it has all the documentation, and everybody will be able to use that same form to be able to make that decision. But at the end of the day, when you think about discretionary, the word discretionary means that it's given at the discretion of the person who is being submitted to. So it's not a council decision to be able to determine where the money goes. It's where that individual counselor has been submitted to something, has been submitted to the counselor, or something has been submitted to the mayor. I feel that the form is great, uniformity is great, but my only words are that we are discussing something that we already have ordinance for, which is Section 299 in the Code of Ordinance for the city of Irondale.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilman London, you sounded like you had some follow-up questions or could that address it? Outstanding, I'm sorry. Thank you. Moving on, did you have any new information to add to that? That's with your item?
Well, it's true that it's discretionary, the definition for discretionary is to the discretion of the council member, but we need to have some guidelines so that we can all be seeing and having the same head nod. Because my interpretation of discretionary can certainly differ from our council president's definition of discretionary. This puts the uniformity in place, we have guidelines in place, we know what it means, and we can make these informed decisions on what is actually discretionary. These are taxpayer funds and we need to be able to give an accounting and an explanation for how these funds were used.
Mr. President, would this one come in? We're done with it, we're done with it. What I don't want, I don't want, I don't want all councilmen deciding what I need to do with my...
That was to my point as well, Councilman London. Okay, moving forward, so that is R33, we've debated that. We find ourselves on item number five, Resolution 2021-R34, appoints Mayor James D. Stewart Jr. to be the voting delegate and Councilman Bobby Joe Wilson as the alternative for the city of Irondale at the Alabama League of Municipalities 2021 Annual Business Meeting. Yes, sir. Could we make one correction on this, instead of Bobby Joe Wilson as the alternate for the city of Irondale, that we put Robert Box, Councilman Robert Box in my place? Are you volunteering him, or did y'all talk about this prior?
I would gladly go if needed, sir, if not, anyone else that, you know, would be more beneficial to the city, I'd be glad to surrender that too.
Okay, so, Council President, can I make a recommendation? Since Councilman Box is going, and I've done this several times, I would never want to steal this opportunity for him to be a part of that meeting. So if you want to make him the alternate and make Councilman Wilson to be the alternate in the event that Councilman Box can't be there, I would surely waive that responsibility and give him the opportunity to sit in that meeting.
So is your recommendation to make Councilman Box the voting delegate?
He is the voting delegate.
The voting delegate and Councilman Wilson as the alternate. Is that what we're proposing?
Yes.
Sorry, Bobby Joe.
Well, in all due respect, Mayor, I was, I was trying to, you know, just have my replacement.
I'll be the alternate. Fair enough, thank you.
I thought this was when I was in the military and I'd be volunteering.
I like the word volatile, yeah? All right, so for item number five, in regards to this appointment, we're going to have Councilman Box as the voting delegate with Mayor Stewart as the alternate. I hope someone's taking notes, I'll start myself. Box is voting in. All right, item number six, before we move on, are there any questions, Councilman London? Councilman Wilson? Councilman Box? Myself, no. Yeah, okay. And then Councilman Perry, perfect, thank you. Item number six, Resolution 2021-R35, approves the request to toll time for appeal of demolition order to the city council on the Siesta Motel. Mayor, this is, has your name next to it, would you like to introduce the course?
Yes. Several weeks ago, the Siesta Motel went through the abatement board, they declared a nuisance that was passed on to the city council, and the city council declared for the city to be able to proceed with abolishing the structure if no one can begin to begin the process of trying to repair it. The Siesta at the current time is under a sales contract, and my thoughts are, you know, if we can get someone to buy instead of the seat, having to expend funds to be able to tear it down, or for anybody to tear it down, and then we have a blighted hole in that spot, and then we'll begin to cut, get complaints about, you know, when you know, cut the grass, the weeds growing up and all of that, so it's kind of like a catch 22. This resolution basically frees the amount of time to allow the Siesta to appeal the process in the event that the sale of the structure fails.
Thank you, Mayor, and...
And that the rezoning is not approved by the council.
Gotcha. So, Ms. Danielson, I believe, I know we spoke a little bit on the phone and I asked you to clarify that, can you please state some of the things that you mentioned to me that sort of helped me through this?
This would allow the property owner to be able to appeal the condemnation, determination by the city council until April 23rd, 2021, which would be two days after the city council considers the rezoning of this particular, you know, parcel from I-1 to R-4. And the attorney for the Siesta is in the audience, his name is Eric Johnston, if you guys have any questions.
Thank you. And something that helped me a little bit today when we spoke is, I was kind of caught off guard by the wording a little bit. When we're saying toll time, we're not saying that we're taking it off the table completely, we were just, like you said in your last point, we were just sort of moving the goalpost a little bit in order for them to appeal and have that hearing at the council, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Thank you, ma'am. Councilman London, any questions for me on this? Usually I'm paid, no, no. Thank you. Councilman Wilson, any questions on this? Councilman Box?
No, no questions on this.
I have no questions on this either. Council, Councilwoman Quayle?
Yes, I have questions on this, and that is, I did tune into the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting that was held, and four of the board members denied the rezoning because they are requesting a rezoning, it's currently commercial, and they're requesting an R4 residential. And what is wanting to be done is to build apartments there. And that would mean, they have not done the due diligence, which is to determine whether there is asbestos, and we know that there is asbestos there. It would be a significant expenditure to try to renovate that structure to make it to where you're going to have apartments that are going to be rented, and you're talking about 800 square feet type apartments right in the middle of a Golden Rule restaurant, and then you have an auto repair. And our goal here in the city is to improve our city and making this to R4, it's just not going to be something that would be appealing, especially when we are not sure about the kind of rent that's going to be charged. First I heard it was $600 a month to $700, and then all of a sudden it's been changed to 850. I'm very uncomfortable with this and I'm not comfortable with changing it to R4, and that is probably one of the major reasons with our Planning and Zoning Commission for the members that were not in agreement with rezoning, the rezoning request. I'm just not comfortable with it, thank you.
Thank you, and then once again to clarify on this, we're not saying, this right here basically, if this motion is approved, then it basically gives them time to approach the council and bring the decision for rezoning in front of the council. If we do not toll the time, then it basically, the hotel is up for abatement basically immediately. Would that be correct, Ms. Danielson? Fair assessment?
Their appeal time would expire prior to the council's consideration of the rezoning.
Understood. Thank you, ma'am. Item number seven, under New Business. Ordinance 2021-5 provides for certain improvements to streets and public ways in the Mountain Lakes Estate subdivision. And then in unison, we're going to go ahead and address item eight because I believe they're addressed in a similar manner. Ordinance 2021-6 provides for certain improvements to streets and public ways in the old Overton Trail subdivision. Once again, Ms. Danielson, I would lean on you to explain why we're readdressing these ordinances. Or Mayor, for that matter.
I'll speak to it since I've got the microphone in my hand.
Perfect.
When we adopted the ordinance to consider the public improvements and to be able to have a public hearing, to allow the public and the community to be able to come and voice their opinion on April 21st, we realized that we could not have conceptual drawings, but we had to have, basically put everything together as if it was getting ready to go out to bid. We have not had enough time to be able to do that, so we're asking that the time is being postponed and that we will address it in a public hearing on June the 16th. That's two months, and that gives both entities to be able to do all of the detailed stuff that need to be done for the roads in the old Overton Trail subdivision, and it also allows all of the schematics and all of the plans and the cost estimates to be determined for the bridge and the improvements in the Mountain Lakes Estate at the same time. So we're basically asking for a postpone of the June 16th to be able to address this matter before the council.
So that April 21st meeting with it being pushed back to June 16th, correct?
Yes.
Outstanding, that's because of the plans not being ready now. Councilman London, any questions regarding this? Councilman Wilson, any questions regarding this?
No questions.
Councilman Box?
No questions.
Councilman Quayle?
I have a question. I also noticed in the resolution on Section 2 that there was a change there as far as who would be preparing the drawings and so on. Originally, the ordinance that was approved back in March or February said Civil Consultants, Inc., and that has been changed to Saint Associates. Can you explain that, please?
Yes, Saint Associates, which is the city engineers, they're the ones who would be preparing the plans for both projects, and civil...
Consultants.
Consultants will actually be the engineers that will review their work.
Okay.
So we just flip flopped the positions of the engineers.
All right, thank you. And unfollowing the office of the city engineer, where would that be?
Well, what we're going to do, once all of that is created, we will probably find a place in the council chamber in that we would put out tables and we would lay the plans and the specs on those tables, and we will also announce it to the public that at that time individuals can come to the council chamber and they can actually review those plans to be prepared to share their information during the public hearing on June 16th.
Okay, thank you, Mayor.
Okay, so we have gone through our 10 items. So basically, we need to go ahead and finish up the crafting of our agenda. Unfinished business number one has been recommended that we postpone this item. Would we be in agreement on that? Anybody not in agreement on postponing item number one? Okay, fair enough. In regards to item number two, under New Business, would anybody feel that that needs to be on consent? Councilman London, I see you nodding in the affirmative. Councilman Wilson? Councilman Box? Item number two, you're good?
Thank you.
Councilman, okay, and myself as well. So item two, under New Business, we've agreed for consent. I'm sorry, unfinished business, I apologize. Yep, thank you. New Business, item number one, Resolution 2021-R30, appoints Mike Davis to the abatement board. Can we, is this an item that we can put on consent? Councilman London? Councilman Wilson? Councilman Box?
Yes.
Councilman Quayle?
Yes.
All right, outstanding. New Business one on consent. I would ask the same for item number two, in regards to Marcus Ferris. Everyone good?
Yes.
And then once again, those items, the board until would be end of this council term before the record. All right? And then in regards to item number three, regarding David Rawson to the commercial development, is this something that we need to, is this something we want to move forward and vote on, is this something that we want to postpone? I'm open to recommendations.
I recommend we postpone indefinitely and go through the process that we've been doing until the city, just follow the process that we're always here.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Wilson? Okay, Councilman Box?
You know, as long as there's not a specific emergency, which I don't think that has risen to the case, I thought it was, but it appears to have. We have time, and as long as Mr. Rawson is going to continue graciously serving, hopefully recently.
I would agree with the three of y'all. Councilman Quayle, Councilwoman Quayle?
I'd like us to vote on it.
So we will vote on item number three? Or will I add it to the agenda? Resolution 2020-R35 implements policies and procedures for discretionary funds. Councilman London?
Well, I think we all got it in place, how we need to use the funds, and I don't think we need to actually give a third document out, and we need to tell how we need to...
Councilman Wilson?
Think you mentioned the Resolution R35, didn't you say 35?
I said 35, I meant 32. 33, sorry. Okay, perfect. Thank you, sir. In regards to item number five, under New Business? Do we have, does everybody agree on this? Ma'am?
Item 35, I'd like us to vote on that.
Item number five, Resolution 34.
I consent, Father.
All right, item number six, under New Business, Resolution R15. Councilman London? Councilwoman Quayle is asking for a vote on that? Ordinance, so item number seven and eight, very similar in nature. Councilman London? Go ahead and put them on for a vote, obviously. Any follow-up comments on that, Councilman Wilson?
Yes, so basically, we're postponing, I thought we were postponing.
Well, the ordinance itself is basically a postponement. Because the plan's going to be drawn up fast enough, we had to kind of move the date from April 21st. So we basically already approved this prior, we're just moving the date essentially, so we have to redo the ordinance. Councilman Box? And Councilwoman, Councilwoman Quayle? So would anyone like... So would anyone like to make a motion and for the agenda as just discussed?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda as discussed, uh, with the following consent items. Under unfinished business, item number two. Under new business, uh, consent items will be item number one, item number two, item number five, and that's it.
And, oh, it's second.
I'm sorry.
We still have to vote on the ordinance, I believe.
Yeah.
Okay. Yep. And then, uh, item number-
And item number one on the new business, that's right.
As far as postponement. Postponement, thank you. All right, so we have a motion for the agenda on the floor. May we have a second?
Second.
Second? Okay.
Second.
You're good, Councilman London?
Yes.
Okay, cool. So we have a motion and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, any opposed? Okay, we found ourselves now at any pub floor, ready for any public comments on agenda items only. We'll be using the two-minute rule of public comments. If you could, sir, please state your name and your address.
If I have some platform, I'd be very, thank you. Steven Moreno, three seven four three Mainbridge Trace Drive. I assume since the quality of the verbal on this is so poor, it's hard to hear. Uh, eight, seven, eight, you're still on the agenda?
Yes, yes.
Okay. My comment is regards to number eight. I think in two previous meetings, which I tried to make these comments virtually, but technical difficulties have prevented that. Uh, there was a comment made that a president had been sent in Mainbridge Trace. And Mainbridge Trace is president of the HOA at the time, the time the payment was done. There was an estimate done by the city of eighty-one thousand four hundred and twenty-seven dollars. That was done by the city engineer. Raymond Barrett, Jim Scott, the original developers, had a deposit with the city, forty-two thousand dollars in the form of a CD. When Mr. Hightower got involved and he bought out the remaining lots, he added to that the thirty-two thousand one hundred and nine dollars and eighty-eight cents for some reason. But that was required by the city to go out loud and get the permits to proceed. So at that point, there was seventy-four thousand dollars, one hundred and nine eighty-eight on the deposit with the city. I had pledged to the then-mayor Alexander that the HOA would make up any difference. We were billed for seven thousand one hundred and eighty-three sixty-five. Unless the accounting procedure was wrong, the city did not expend any taxpayer funds to finish out Mainbridge Trace. So it is not a precedent for what's being asked for in number eight. If there's any discrepancy, somebody at the city did not keep up with the numbers and did not build the way it should have been. It's my pleasure to make it up. So again, no public funds to spend. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other comments on-
Moreno, Moreno, can you pass that microphone back up, sir?
I think we might as well just leave it there in case anyone has any other comments they would like to come up to. Um, any other comments on agenda items only? Agenda items only. Okay, yes, ma'am. Your name and your address, please.
Torrey's Pyramid, twenty-three oh eight Second Avenue South. I am very concerned about that these little parts of the unresolved business, item one. Um, I'm concerned because we should have reviewed that before it went out. And I feel like this is another cannon down the road, um, thing by the owners of property. Um, so I would really like, I heard twenty-one days, but when will this be, um, be adjusted up for the council? Um, and what's the timeline?
We have twenty-one days for the notes to go out?
No, twenty-one days to complete the process. So it would be the first council meeting in May.
Thank you. Any other comments on non-agenda items, I mean on agenda items only? Yes, sir?
Uh, my name is Eric Johnson. I represent the Siesta Motel and its whole family. We appreciate your consideration of our request. We lagged time that we needed to appeal to the center, uh, with the last meeting. Unfortunately, we missed the time that made the notes. We were there to discuss that with you. And we, we understand your concerns about the zoning. Uh, we would like to give the prospective purchasers the opportunity to present that case to you. And that I stand that you decide afterwards whether we appeal. Uh, if the decision is in motion, uh, we assure you that we're making every effort. The new project along, uh, June of July, July of two thousand nineteen. It's a unique and large expensive property. We've been there together to try to sell it and develop. And we've had many contracts, which are great for reasons they do not some thrift. Uh, we've got very valuable, very viable offer this time. And so we hope that the presentation of the next meeting to the council will, uh, demonstrate the nature of the, the good development that will be forthcoming. So we would just ask you to give us that time to do that. So I have to cooperate with you as much as possible.
Makes sense. Any questions for soon? Thank you, sir, for your time.
Yeah, thank you.
Any questions for me, um, if anybody present on agenda items only? I understand we're streaming on multiple platforms. Chief, do we have any questions on agenda items only?
Not currently.
Not currently? Uh, I would like to use the official platform. What is our official platform?
The, the official media page for the city of Irondale.
Yeah, which is yours, correct?
Correct.
Okay. But I know Bishop is also live streaming to the city YouTube page, I believe. Uh, Mr. Bishop, do you have any comments from that city page?
None at this time.
Thank you very much, sir, I appreciate that. Okay, so we have, uh, we have concluded our public comments on agenda items only. We have an approved agenda. That being said, item number three, I'd accept a motion for resolution twenty- Oh, thank you. Item number three, I'd accept a motion for resolution twenty twenty-one R dash thirty-two.
Motion that-
Excuse me, uh, Council President, we didn't follow on the consent items. Did y'all make a motion to set me to follow the consent items?
When we approved the agenda, we had those as consent.
Yeah, but they're, that's a separate motion. I don't want it to be where we have to come back to the next-
I would agree.
Council, we can do it all over again.
Okay. All right. So R twenty, so item number one, R twenty-one, motion for consent?
Motion.
Uh, Council President, you can put all of them on consent. You just need to approve that they will put on consent, so you don't have to go through each one.
It's a little different than I feel like we've been doing it.
Yeah, it's, it's a little bit different, but we just don't, we don't want to make the mistake to have-
No, we do not.
Ten items from unfinished business, all right, as Council Leader.
Thank you. So as, as pointed out in the motion, uh, to approve the agenda, like Mr. uh, Councilman Wilson said, we had, uh, item number two, so a motion for item number two under unfinished business, item number one under new business, item number two under new business, item number five under new business for consent. So motion's on the floor, do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you very much. All right, that being said, coming back to item number three under new business, I'll accept a motion for twenty twenty-one R thirty-two.
Make a motion that resolution R twenty twenty-one, excuse me, twenty twenty-one dash R thirty-two be-
Do we have a second? Anyone in favor? Uh, the motion has failed. Um, item number four, I accept a motion for twenty twenty-one R thirty-three.
I make a motion that resolution twenty twenty-one dash R dash thirty-three be approved.
Do we have a second? Anyone in favor? That motion fails. Item number five is on consent. I'll accept a motion for resolution twenty twenty-one R thirty-five.
I'll make a motion that resolution twenty twenty-one R dash thirty-five be approved, as written.
Do we have a second? Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, do we have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
One opposed, four approved. Then we find our, our sales, item seven and eight are two ordinances for the evening. Uh, I would accept someone to begin the process to walk us through that ordinance. Yes, let's take it one at a time.
I'll make a motion that ordinance number twenty twenty-one dash five be considered.
Motion's on the table, do we have a second? Second? All in favor?
Aye.
I'll make a motion that all rules that would prevent the immediate consideration and adoption of ordinance number twenty twenty-one dash five be suspended and that unanimous consent be given for the immediate consideration of said ordinance.
He's second? Second? Roll call, Councilman London?
Yes.
Councilman Wilson?
Yes.
Councilman Box?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Councilman Quayle?
Yes.
And finally, sir?
I'll make a motion that ordinance number twenty twenty-one dash five be finally passed and adopted as introduced.
Second?
We have a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Uh, item under, uh, item number eight under new business, if we may?
All right, I'll make a motion that ordinance number twenty twenty-one dash six be considered read.
Second? Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Yes, sir?
I'll make a motion that all rules that would prevent the immediate consideration and adoption of ordinance number twenty twenty-one dash six be suspended and that unanimous consent be given for the immediate consideration of said ordinance.
Second? We have a second, roll call, Councilman London?
Yes.
Councilman, um, Wilson?
Yes.
Councilman Box?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Councilman Quayle?
Yes.
Finally?
And finally, I'll make a motion that ordinance number twenty twenty-one dash six be finally passed and adopted as introduced.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Okay, so that gets us through our agenda for the evening. At this time, uh, we would open ourselves up for public comments to the council on non-agenda items. And once again, we'll enforce the two-minute rule. Please give us your name and your address.
Good evening, I'm Amy Bautias, one zero zero four Main Lane. Uh, my question is in regards to Rutherford Park. Um, I'm just curious as, uh, the phase one that's been voted on and approved, if we have received any bids yet and if not, um, what, what stage are we at?
Uh, the civil engineer that was working with all of the project died of a heart attack about a month ago. Uh, I think it was in February, Black Art Cart, who was the civil engineer of the project. So he dead, he died about, I guess, a couple of months now. It kind of, kind of delayed them getting everything ready for the project. However, it should be going out to bid. No, I, well, I'm going to say April, I could give you a year, but it should go out by April thirtieth. And instead of trying to do it in two or three different phases, the goal is to be able to do all of it in one phase. So it should go out by the end of this month.
Okay, so phase one will continue to advance, um, because it's been voted and approved?
Yes, we're going to try to do the whole thing at one time. Instead of doing half of the part, the heavy look good, and then the other part, part of it still look like nothing has been done to it. So I think that we've come up with a way, uh, financially, uh, to be able to do everything at one time.
Wonderful, thank you.
Steven Moreno, three seven four three Mainbridge Trace Drive, my question was actually the same. Uh, so, uh, the answer was we have not implemented anything in phase one, even though it's approved over five months ago, and money's already done.
Uh, how can we implement something in phase one when the project hasn't been bidded? So the project has to be bidded before you can do any work on the project.
Five months, we haven't been able to do it.
Well, I mean, you can-
Thank you, that's, that's all, that's just enough.
Okay, well, you heard my answer the first time, so.
Thank you.
My name is Laura Keizer. I live at nine twenty-three Ivywood Road. And I'm here on behalf of a number of, uh, folks in the District Three. We're concerned about several issues related to the development at eight eight five Hitching Post Lane. I spoke to you about this back in January. Our concerns include stormwater management and the closely related issues of zoning and lot size. But tonight I'm here to talk with you about the entrance from our small, quiet neighborhood, Ivywood Road and Woodair Drive, an entrance to this twenty acres where, uh, Mr. Isaac Davis wants to build somewhere between seventy and one hundred homes. There are fourteen homes on our streets, so this would dramatically increase the traffic. Um, we are concerned for safety. Our road has a very steep hill and a line curve. We're concerned particularly for safety of the children in our neighborhood and also the pedestrians who walk or exercise. There's a small church right on that steep hill and in that line curve. The families of the church are concerned for the safety of themselves and their children. We are also concerned about damage to our roads. Studies by the Department of Transportation and at numerous ethnic institutions tell us that construction trucks and heavy trucks caused equal damage to about six thousand or up to sixty thousand automobile trips. So we're concerned about damage to the road. We're aware of similar situations in the recent past with Mr. Price Hightower's construction traffic that was going through the Grandsmore Crossing. The neighbors complained, these were trucks that were going to the Ridge Development. And so that, that was rerouted. We also are aware of the Abington Development, where five residents expressed concern about the traffic coming out onto their very small street. Uh, and some of the council members who were here tonight, um, actually butted against that access on that street. We're also aware of the illegal land clearing at the Malone Property. And that has happened at this property as well, where the developer cleared the land before filing a plan in comments.
Two, two minutes, sir.
Um, and there is a, uh, there are a number of people here to support this, but in the, in the respect for everyone's time, I think we're not going to do that with Mr. Jeffrey Stone.
My name is Ben Martin. I live in five five four four Hunters Hill Road. Uh, this is a follow-up question. Something earlier I addressed to Mayor Stewart. Uh, you said that if I understood you, that the bids should go out by the end of this month?
Uh, yes.
Or thereabouts?
Yes.
Are, are we going to be looking at the same project that was presented to us at prior city council meetings of the whole region of Rutherford?
Yeah, noth- nothing has changed.
Nothing's changed.
Uh, nothing has changed. I mean, initially, initially when the plan was presented to the, to the, to the citizens, it was not in its final state to go out in a bid. When I came in to be the mayor and I sat down and had a meeting with them, it was at that time that I learned that the total amount of the project was supposed to be seven million dollars instead of one million dollars. Therefore, I could not commit to that when I came into office, uh, to, because that's not being good steward of the city funds. So we, nothing's changed, the ballpark, parts, dog parks, walking trails, sidewalks, uh, the amphitheater. Uh, everything is still the same way that it was before I took office. It just takes time to put bid packages together. And with the death of the civil engineer, it has even extended the period to be a little bit longer to be able to get that out.
There, there was no way. And I've sat at that park now for over three years with my puppy. There was no way that park was going to get redone for six hundred or a million. You got a billion dollars probably just in demolition work, tearing out the old infrastructure and preparing the ground to fill them. But I don't know, that's why that was supposed to be in phases.
Yes, and, and, and I don't have a problem with anybody talking to, uh, the individuals that was developing the park because I'm- Yes, and, and, and I don't have a problem with anybody talking to the individuals that was developing the park because I'm not saying anything to extend anything because I'm now the mayor, because I realize when you come into office, you inherit whatever is there, doesn't matter who was there before you got there. Uh, but there was some additional stuff that needed to be done on this project, just like there was some additional things that needed to be done on the grocery store project before we finally get into the point of closing it out as well. So it just takes time.
Understood.
My name is Jack Essel, under that eight 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 Ivywood Road. On behalf of my neighbors, I am submitting a petition to close the road at, at, that in the addition to Woodair Drive. My property directly, uh, but, uh, Woodair is to the north, to the south of my property. And my property also is to the, uh, to the east of Hitching Post Lane. So we, we've had several conversations on the area, we've met a couple times, Zoom calls, and we, we discussed this as a possibility. But I think this more action needs to be done to go ahead and, and get that in motion. Before construction starts, we, we really don't need that traffic up through there. We really don't need that one interior, we have people in that neighborhood, we have people that walk every afternoon. We're zoned, as far as our zoning, we are safe. So in our area, these are one, the state shouldn't carry the traffic of our one neighborhood residences. So we, now that he has access to that front road, which is, um, I just called it, uh, the siding drive. He has all that sixteen acres and that puts up to his twenty acres. He has plenty of access, he can put two, three, or four, whatever he want to do, but for our community to take all that traffic would be a burden for our community. That's, that's.
Well, I'm glad you're all here tonight, I can't say this in a phone call, uh, to have to call anybody to see if you are available to do a Zoom call next week. Uh, Mr. David wants to be able to communicate, uh, to the community. Uh, he finally is getting close to having some plans, and he would like for you all to have some input, uh, into those plans. And we just wanted, I, I gave you all my word that is, I will keep you abreast on what's going on. And we, we basically get the plans to see how things are going to take place, that allows us to be able to go ahead and take the next step. But right now, we don't know what is going to take place, and it would be kind of premature to go ahead and close that. So if you all will mind, if we could meet next week to be able to see exactly what his plans are and allow you all to be able to give input to that, uh, we, we would appreciate that time.
Alright, alright.
We're not gonna do anything to allow them to come in and do anything.
I understand that, but that road already being there for him is just easy access. Right now, we're already getting a lot of traffic through there as far as, from the, uh, the people that's doing survey and folks that's curious and everything else that's going on through there. But, um, I think the delay of that would be kind of an injustice in our neighborhood. I think it shows a great, show of faith to the neighborhood that's there, that the city is behind us on our quality of life that we pay for.
Well, we, we're behind you all, and we also, we also have to make sure that we legally do the right thing as well.
That is.
And that's the, I mean, how can you deny somebody access to their property at this present time when they don't have any other access to their property? So I don't believe legally that we could close a road to deny access at this point in time because there's no other access point for him to be able to get to the property.
My understanding that access is if you do, if you are a landlord, he is not a landlord, his property is actually owned that main drive. Just because it's not, it's not convenient for him, that does not mean that he does not have access.
Well, I'll let our attorneys.
I'll let the attorneys.
I would need by, by parcel, and that parcel that actually abuts up to your road, you know, does not have access by any other road other than that particular road. And so that's why you need to wait to really be able to put all of the pieces together, you know, and that is definitely something that can be considered. Whenever, you know, the developer brings these, these development plans forward, you know, is to look at exactly what you're asking for, you know? That's, that's part of the overall consideration there.
I just don't wanna keep backing up because we, we seem to keep hearing different numbers of houses changing, how many houses he's gonna put over there. Um, we seem to keep on hearing on different motions that he's saying about the lot sizes that's gonna change, that he's hoping to try to change. So we're, we're, we're not gonna be in a position where we keep making steps for this contractor, for this, this landlord owning to profit from.
Well, I'm, I'm just asking you all to, because I, I don't have the answers, and I've said from day one, uh, that I don't have the answers to everything that he's going to do, but he said that he's finally to the point where he has a plan. And I would like to submit that plan to the community so the community can have input. And I promised that, you can ask Ms. Laura, I promised that from day one, that that's what we would do, uh, because I'm here to be able to serve the community, not to serve the developer. But we also gotta make sure that we do things that are legally correct at the same time.
Thank you very much, sir.
Hello, I'm James Lyon, I'm out here on behalf of my sister, who owns probably a forty-nine ninety-nine old street. And we haven't had any water for a while. Uh, she found out about the proceedings, or the hearing, uh, too late, too at, and she lives in Atlanta. This was my sister's house, for eighteen years she lived there, it was her primary residence, and she loves the house, and it was, I actually watched the video of the last, uh, meeting. And it was a very fine house, and it's very sad that it's fallen in the state that it is, but what we would ask is to toll the town, that it gives us an opportunity to evade it ourselves. Uh, and to secure the house, um, you know, so that residents or whoever can't come in there and do our best to remove it as public nuisance. It's also listed for sale, and she claims that she has somebody very interested, uh, similar situation. It is a historical house, it's, it was the minds of pretenders' house. Um, I think that maybe you've seen some of the pictures that she's in, but, uh, it does have historical significance in Doverton Heights area. She's been in contact with Alabama Conservation Association, Historical Society, um, and working with the lady there to try to get, uh, historical significance. So that's what I have for my sister.
Thank you very much, sir.
Mr. Moreno, one of the things I did stop by the house today, because I did receive the email, and I did stop by and visit with the neighbor, Ms. Samantha Paul, that is immediately behind this house. And there are children that live at this house, and I actually went to this house and spoke with the resident there, and she told me, uh, I mentioned to her that, um, your sister's email said that it was something that she was looking into having that designated as historical. My question to you, sir, is according to the neighbor, um, that house has been like that for twenty years, and for twenty years, nothing has been done as far as its historical significance. So why are we, uh, are, are you asking us to now give you more time when you have twenty years to do something with this house? Uh, and, and the burden and everything of the neighbors, uh, it is in that shape, uh, and this is not something that just happens overnight. It's been going on, it hasn't had intentions that it should have had, and you're asking now, you're asking us to continue kicking the can. So that's point number one. Point number two is, in discussing that property, um, the realtor is trying to sell that as a commercial property. That property is zoned residential, it is not zoned commercial. So even if you were to, to sell that property, uh, you wouldn't be able to because you're gonna need to come before the planning and zoning to ask for a rezoning. And then the zoning will supplement the council, so this delays the process, and is it fair to that woman that lives behind that property to have to continue worrying about the children that live in that home?
Thank you very much, sir. Okay. Thank you.
I already spoke, can I respond to the comments that were made by me? No?
I'll give you two minutes to respond to that.
Yes, we would like to see the plans that you mentioned. Um, David actually reached out to me to let me know that he was ready and wanted to schedule a meeting. He also said that he wanted to ask the neighbors to support him in, in changing the lot size from a minimum width of eighty to a minimum width of sixty, which would allow him to put more homes. And he said that if we did that, then he would close the entrance. So, um, that was one of the reasons we felt like we needed to initiate this process with a petition from the homeowners whose property abuts the road, uh, because we need, we need to get started. So this is just the beginning of a process that we understand will take some time, and it will be the city council's decision. So, yes, we would like to meet to see the plans.
Thank you, ma'am. Any final comments from the council on any of the items that we've discussed tonight, or any of the comments that we've heard from the audio? Um, Clark, Chief, do we have any comments from the, uh, virtual side?
Not at this time.
Alright, um, Mr. Bishop, any comments from the, um, city YouTube side?
None.
Councilman Box?
Just, uh, just for clarification, I now, uh, Councilman, so as you understand that Mr. Ross and can continue to serve and to protect the union for how much longer?
Um, this resolution didn't have to, he'll continue to serve until the CDA board would, uh, submit to the city clerk and ask the city clerk to.
Advertise, and then we go through the process, correct?
And it takes a month, residents would have a month to submit their resignation, pressing their ending.
Well, it's actually the council that drives the appointment of the CDA. Uh, it kind of got mixed up somewhere where the CDA believes that they're the one who, who, who drives the car. But it's the council that opens up the appointment for the position. The applications are submitted to the council, and the council are the ones who are responsible for voting and putting the person in that position. The council does not have to take a recommendation from the CDA because it's not the CDA appointment, it's the council appointment. So we will put out to the public tomorrow that there's a position open. We can do it for fifteen days to thirty days, whatever, how many days you all desire. And we will receive the applications, turn them over to the council, and the council will be the one who select, who serves on that committee.
So, so Mayor, barring a resignation, immediate resignation from Mr. Ross, and the CDA is not gonna be shorthanded at this point?
No, and there's nothing really going on where it has to be five members there to decide what to do anyway.
Okay. Uh, Councilman Wilson, I believe you asked for a follow-up comment?
I did, actually, it's not a follow-up comment, it's, uh. Actually, it's, it's not a follow-up comment, actually, I had a announcement. Is, is there anything I need to comment on as far as the commercial?
No, Ms. Laura, I'm concerned after your, um, after what is, is you're about to say, I'm gonna accept the motion to adjourn. So you have the floor until.
Okay.
Yeah, your last.
Yeah, I, I need, I need to sit down. And I will address, I will address the, uh, the mayor and the council because I wanna make sure that, um, put the elephant in the room, I wanna make sure everyone understands exactly where I'm coming from. So, uh, dear mayor and council, it is with regret that I must inform you that I will resign my position as Irondale City Council at an undetermined time this year. I will be given this position for personal reasons that won't allow me to feel my duties as a city councilman to the fullest extent as needed at this time. I have voted over fourteen plus years of my life to serve in this position to the greatest of my ability and with intent. Yes, there were times when I had to question myself whether I wanted to continue. However, with the Lord on my side, I realized it wasn't about me. I was put here as a servant to serve the people as I've done throughout my entire professional career, not only with Alamo Power, but also with the city of Irondale. Also to the citizens of District Three, which this position used to be District Three at one time. And currently District Five, who have believed and trusted in me to serve my area and serve them well. I would like to thank you all for voting for me because you did put me here, the citizens, for voting for me to be your leader despite all of the rhetoric and false social media innuendos that I've had endured, that I've had to endure during my years of service. I want everyone to know that I fought for what is right and to express not only my feelings, but the feelings of my constituents when it came to things not being fair and consistent through previous administrations. One thing I'm reminded of, though, when I think about what Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. and Representative John Lewis went through back in the sixties, of course, I was born then, that was a cakewalk, uh, for me, that's what I've had to endure since I've been here. Uh, these men and several other pioneers have paved the way, not only for myself, but others like me, to be where we are today. In closing, I know we're on social media, but before you hear from anyone else, um, I'm not leaving the city. I'm, I'm still at five oh eight Conway Lane, still my primary address, and I don't plan on going anywhere, even though some of you may think I will, but I'm still not going anywhere. Not anytime soon either. I stand behind and firmly believe in Mayor Stewart's plan for this city. During my tenure here as a city councilman, which I said fourteen plus years, and everyone that we did a proclamation for today, I have served with, and has learned and have learned something from each one of those gentlemen. But, as I can say, uh, for the first time, uh, this city, my belief, is moving in a direction of promise, and we have the right leader leading us. This is a great council, and it is a great council, and I believe in it, and I do. And I could not say that in my earlier career as a servant here on the city council. However, in my heart, family comes first. Family comes before anything else, not before God, but family is more important than me spending another however many years that you keep me here. But this is an issue that I have to address, uh, that's personal to me. I would like to thank everyone for listening, and I also wanna thank, uh, everyone for just, you know, being here and being present. In closing, I just wanna say how much I miss working with all of the great, uh, city staff at City Hall. They have been wonderful. I thank them all for helping me just to find my way through City Hall, even though, you know, with me working every day, when I do come there, they're so delightful, they're so helpful. Uh, and that's been through my whole team here at the city. I can only hope that I've been some value to the city during my time here. Thank you.
With that being included, I would accept a motion to adjourn?
One more, one more thing, and I wanna see how that story get twisted in social media.
We have a motion, do we have a second? Second on the floor, all in a favor? Uh, any opposed? Thank you. Have a good evening, thank you for your time this evening.